Okay.
Okay, we will call the planning commission meeting to order. We have a couple items on the agenda, one of them we're gonna postpone which is the county housing and market assessment. That might be postponed for a couple meetings. We'll start with public comment, and there is nobody here from the public to comment, but if anyone from the commission has anything they wanna comment on, they're more than welcome to. Okay, we will move on to department or development updates. I asked Ellen if she would like to have a standing block in our agenda, just provide general updates. She said that would be nice, and so if you would like to take it over for Ellen and give us any updates.
Sure.
Just nothing extravagant, just anything that's going on.
Yeah, so I picked just the very top three things that we're working on. You guys have probably heard annual action plan being talked about time and again. That's getting wrapped up at the end of the month. We are submitting the plan at the last day of June. Public comment will run until the 24th. So if you guys aren't familiar or haven't looked at it and you want some input, please by all means, we have a paper copy here at the library and it can be found online. For housing internally, we are still working on a healthy homes production which is partnered with the Chautauqua County lead division which is pretty cool. So we got a big chunk of money available and we're doing some rehabilitation work on some homes. The rental rehab, same thing, we got some extra money from the state. It's extra COVID money that had to go towards like homeless prevention, so getting condemned rental units was slated for this. So we were able to get eleven total units back online by the time this program ends. And Jan over in housing is creating out former occupied rehabilitation in her home program. We have a really long list, we're not accepting any applications, but she's closing out a couple projects this month and those are total home rehabs from the program up, which is pretty cool. Under economic development, Forty Windsor and Sixty and a Half Water Street have been sold, they've been secured and they're being prepped for development. So if you've driven past Forty Windsor, the grass is cut and there is a fence up and they're actually working to to secure the place and get stuff ready for for development, so be prepared. Havannah is also sold downtown. I don't really know much about any of these things, but I know what's happening. So hopefully they have something fun and exciting to present also. And then Wicked Jimmy's will open July 13th. Their pizza oven is ordered and installed and they're ready to go. At this point, I don't know if they've been grooming, rumor has it that they have, but it's not confirmed. So they'll be opening in the next three weeks and-
And we're gonna have our next meeting there, right?
It would be a good place, right?
We would get a lot more public turnout.
Yeah, absolutely. And then I gave you guys an extra sheet here, just a table of all of the ARBA expenditures that our department has put out since ARBA funding was available. We're getting close to closing out a lot of our projects. Most of it is economic development and business development. We did get some allocation for housing, so this is just a very brief breakdown that Tim Odell, our grants manager, brought out for us. Nothing too exciting there.
Is this, is this where you spent each of these?
Yep. Yeah, it doesn't have the remaining amount. But a lot of them are, a lot of them are getting close to to closing, and though for groups who only have like three left to do. I don't really know much about the ARBA business stuff. We've done, I guess they were from the business development side of things.
So this is spent, not necessarily what was budgeted?
So each one has their own line of budget now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, if you guys want more information, I'd have Tim send it over. I can send it over to you guys, it's no big deal, I do have a spreadsheet that would have like the amount total allocated. This is, you know, what we've spent so far, but it's just a really brief rundown of how much money we've been able to get out into the community, so. Quite a bit.
Thank you.
That's it, that's all I got. I leave in three weeks and then return until September, so Ellen can't be gone for another meeting. He's only known for five months.
Is there any way that we might all get an update on progress on the comp plan at the next meeting?
Yeah, yep.
Perhaps that would be some good information for the commission to have. What's that, what the status is, what what stages have been accomplished thus far and what's coming up over the next couple of months.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll keep that line on the agenda.
Great, yeah, Ellen will probably have a little bit more to say, but-
I hope so. So the next item is, are there any questions?
I just wanted to comment, it's kind of different than what I've seen in the past. On on different things, what I'm more used to. With these lines, there's, it's hard to be, well you might say when I look at it and maybe even ask a vote on it, I don't have a lot of information about what it has, you know, has to be, or you know, what it's meant to be.
What each one is- Yeah, we could get, we can get that.
Yeah, I can hear this.
And again-
A summary for each project.
This is being presented for information only, it's really not in our purview to, to review.
No, but it means more. You might say as to what you're doing, and that's the thing that I've noticed in the past. But in the past, we get bigger sheets and it's full of stuff.
Well, certainly publicizing what the projects are is, you know, and what they're doing to help the city and stuff is valuable.
We have all of that in the office, I just, I don't know how, this is our first like little slot, so I didn't know how it was supposed to be, and I threw it together this morning.
Well, everything that I worked on in my life has required a lot of information, a lot of times it was from me. So you get kind of used to it as, you know, something that exists and has ran into sometimes in the past when the people didn't have that information and they're out in the field and something's not put together right or formed right or whatever else it might mean. So it just, it's awful.
Can you do, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I'm not being critical, I mean, don't take me wrong on that, it's just something that we got used to over a long history.
Yeah, absolutely, we've got all that stuff prepared and stored away because it was all submitted to council like years ago, so all I gotta do is search the drive and it's in there.
You know, as much as might be online too is good because then I'm not filing on paper. But I'll guarantee at least ninety-nine percent of the time I'll read.
Pretty high percentage.
Higher than that.
That's, yeah, I should say.
All right, so moving on to our book discussion. As I, I don't know if anyone got my email, but because Ellen is gone, I just wanted to focus on the very, just part one, which is like five pages long. Just for a little introduction and just to see what everyone, what everyone thought about it, about the author, where he came from. And I think it sort of sets the tone for some of his later discussions. But some of the things, I guess I will start. One of the things that jumps out at me is, you know, I'm PJ, he's, I'm looking, you know, he's looking for the correlation between a healthy national economy, they would lift up local economies. I don't know if people feel that way or not. I don't know if the healthy national economy, how much of a correlation that has with Jamestown. Just in general, sort of a discussion. The other thing I sort of did is looked at, you know, our population decline, you know, which was from nineteen, you know, what, fifties, we're up to, you know, about forty-three thousand. To right now, the US census as of this month has us at about twenty-seven thousand. So we're on average, we're losing between a hundred and fifty to what, a hundred and seventy residents a year out of the city. Which puts us by twenty-fifty somewhere around twenty-four thousand population. And I know we'll get more, we'll get into that more with the, you know, the housing study and stuff. But all that sort of leads into where I think this book is going and, you know, some of the things that we see in Jamestown can happen overnight and it's been in the making for seventy years. How are we gonna plan, you know, for twenty, for the year twenty-fifty if our population's only twenty-four thousand? Sort of sets in place things that we have to be very careful of. You know, and he's sort of saying that the, you know, the relationships are very important, that we need to reward people and we all need to be more proactive in in the city and how we view it and the work that we put into it. From my personal experience, being on this commission and knowing people who have been on council and have been on other commissions in the past, I don't, every one of them has had people who have worked really tirelessly for the city and that includes the employees. Some of the stuff that he talks about in here is that, you know, people sort of like get complacent, they overlook with, they overlook stuff they're sort of settled in. And I, and thankfully, I haven't, I haven't seen that with the people who have been in in charge. And I know Facebook has a lot of people with their own opinions who like to to talk about them, but the people that I have seen working have worked really hard for for the city. And so I think that's something that we should be proud of. And then the only other thing that sort of jumped out at me is, you know, is, you know, do we have an underlying optimism and sense of hope for Jamestown? You know, or are we the ones who thought the best days were behind us? And then he, you know, it's a valid question and I think if we, if we poll the city, you know, I think we're gonna get a lot of mixed reviews on that. You know, are we going in in a positive direction in the sense of do people who live here have hope that we can, that Jamestown can be a healthy place to stay and live and raise a family? We talked about jobs earlier, we're talking about housing, you know, and what can this commission do to try to instill that hope for for the future? And I think there is hope, I think you just gotta find it, it's gonna be really hard to do. The other interesting thing is he talks about a place that he lived, there was six square miles and had a population of thirty thousand people. And that's, and the most interesting thing I got out of there is that the kids never had to ride a bus and it was a walking community. There was no buses, no public transportation, and I was like, well, and it's not that, not that far from us. But it was, one of the things he talked about was that it was, you know, it seems that he liked the fact it was a walking community. And I think about Jamestown and there's a lot of residents here that that have to walk. And are we set up for that, is our infrastructure set up to be walk, walkable? You know, and if, and if not, what, you know, where is it mostly concentrated and how, you know, do they have access to food, you know, medical and how can we make sure that that it is walkable? Not that I wanna walk right now when it's ninety degrees out, but- Yeah, I just, I just, we can just go around the room and talk, you know.
I'm kind of looking at a lot of this and in reading it, I'm different than you guys in the sense I'm a lot older. And I acknowledge that. If I go back, as I mentioned when I came in, to some thoughts thirty years ago roughly. I was sitting in planning commission, I was also on the city council. And prior to that is, I know I've mentioned in the past that I managed the Brooklyn Square Garden renewal project. My office used to be right about there, you know, with more walls in it at that time. But when I look back at it, looking over a grand or a larger time period, there's a lot of things that have continually been changing for many, many years. And there's a lot of things that happened and the way they changed, people were already even aware of it. And we've had, if you look at a lot of things in the activity in the community, simple things. When I grew up, as an example, Allen Park was full of kids all the time. And we had, of course, music in the summer and the kids loved all these things that were dangerous. To play on, those swings, the, all kinds of other things. When I go up there now, it's changed because there's hardly anybody there. It's so strange since all of that was taken away, there's nobody there. Very few put it that way, is a better way to say it.
That's gonna change with the slave trade. It's gonna be an attraction.
And one of the things that I always think about too when I'm walking around the pool, there was nothing that was ever really done to bring it up to a greater standard. When I was in ninth grade, it used to be off the side of the pool, across the creek, you know, was a big island. And that was always filled with people playing softball. And we used to play it as kids from Jefferson, and I don't know if you all do know where Jefferson used to be. But just before we were leaving our ninth grade year, we had played up there one day at the end in June. And it was hot. We went down that day to the the pool. It was filled up to that first step up, if you will. And there was about fifteen guys and all of us went in and then ran back over to to cool down. And then of course we ran back over to Jefferson and Coach Vich Joy was there waiting for us. And as we went up the stairs, dropping water all over the place, it was kind of funny. He had the biggest smile on his face you could imagine, but he was chewing his salt. Because we did that, but none of those kinds of things are happening anymore in raising kids up. When they hear about it, they're surprised, why isn't it happening today?
Because the human structure is disintegrated.
Yeah, and as they get older, they wonder about other things. We've been, if I go back to when I was confirmed at First Hookman Church, at that time, there were some kids that lived just below or just down the street from the church, back in that area that's kind of bad. Now, it was bad back then. And the kids, though in those days, they had to walk to, from there to grade schools. They had to walk from there to junior high. And when we all got confirmed, including some of the kids that were living there, who are also members in the church, they were so happy, they couldn't believe they only had that short distance to walk. All of those kinds of things in a city make a difference as to how you can live in it, depending on where you are. A lot of people get stuffed into places like that over there and it's, it's been that way for, let's say, for the idea of confirmation. That's close to sixty years ago when I was confirmed. That's a long time for a lot of things never to change. All of those things make a difference. This is from discussions with a lot of people, especially people that were running around and being consultants to cities as to how they should make their cities work and everything. But all these things have been left over the years. There's none of them, there are very few things that have changed in the last fifty, sixty years in a lot of areas of the city. We've lost a lot of population, as you've noted. And a lot of it was because there wasn't things here. Because we lost our industries, people left. Because there wasn't another job. So we're thankful for the one now up in Asheville, but boy, they got a lot of people working up there and that's good. But there are these kinds of changes going on all the time and have been. In many ways, one of the things we talked about, and a couple of guys brought it up thirty years ago in planning commission. And that is the absolute need to, kind of with planning, you've gotta be out front of events as much as you can, not behind them. And that's what makes a city or helps a city to stay stronger. And there was a lot of that that didn't happen, going back thirty years. It was hard to get people to talk about what was happening in the city, they were still happy with the way it was. They liked the downtown, now nobody's in the downtown. The, all those businesses that were there, as mentioned in this book, those businesses are gone. Some of them were people that I went to school with, went to church with, that had businesses in downtown Jamestown. As things changed in the market, they're all gone, all those businesses shut down. All I'm trying to say in this is, having lived here for a long time, I would say for that last thirty, forty years, after, there was a lot of feeling that after Brooklyn Square was over, that we were all set and we're gonna be taken off like a rocket. Didn't happen. And a lot of other people have left because there aren't the jobs anymore, things are gone. This used to be the furniture, wood furniture capital of the world. Sent things everywhere, all of that's gone. So all I'm trying to say in this is, recognize what is said in here, there's a lot of it that is valid. Some of it's not said all that well, but nevertheless, it's valid, it's happened. It's happened here and in the area and Buffalo and everything else. A lot of things continue to change. A lot of that has happened because of technology. Technology has grown greatly. We've gotta be aware of those things. Couple things that, some of the older guys, I was young thirty years ago, so I'm talking about his mother. But there are comments, and these are guys that would have been on council more than once and just about every committee in the, in the city hall. But they all said, if you're gonna be in city hall and working on these things, you have got to be as aware as you possibly can of all the changes going on in the city. My dad told me of all the things that went on in the city as he grew up in the Great Depression and what it had on that. My grandparents told me what it was like coming over here and starting out in the eighteen eighties. And I've been listening to a lot of friends over the years that have had businesses and lost them and everything else, just because the market changed. If we're gonna plan, we have to keep, as a part of what we do, stay on top of. A lot of those things and be aware of and what the impact is, make such a suggestion of things going forward. I apologize for taking so much time, but it's something I had to get off my chest. And my mind, so I can relax.
Part one? Yeah, part one, I mean, there's very, there's very little to comment on. The only thing I will say is that, you know, the author is one, this is one person's viewpoint, you know, and that there are many viewpoints. I'll have, I can have more to say as we go further in the book. There's some specific examples that he does bring up that I, that some I agree with, some I disagree with. But again, you know, this is just one person's viewpoint and I think it's great that we that we read and learn. But, you know, each, each community, each city, each municipality is unique in and of itself. So, you know, we can't take, you know, what happened out in the community in in Ohio and say, well, that's what happened, identically what happened in Jamestown. But I think that we, over the, over the past, you know, couple of decades, we have come to realize that the legacy industries, furniture industry, the, the Crescent Tools are not gonna come back. And I think that the city has done a, has done a good job and planning commission has done a good job in, in trying to discover what the next phase of Jamestown is. It's not gonna be, not gonna return to the, to what it was twenty, thirty years ago. The, it is being out in front of the curve of, you know, what is, what is going to happen next.
Or what is happening and how it might have, what's the effect gonna be as we go down the road a little farther? This change that's going on now.
Yeah, we have a declining population, a population that's aging, you know. I moved away for a few years, I came back and the reason I came back is this is my hometown, so. There are, there are a lot of good things that are happening, with that, I'm done.
I'll just interject a little bit about, you know, what you're saying as far as the declining population. Twenty-seven years ago, there was an opportunity where my wife's business unit decided to leave Jamestown. Very good paying executive type jobs, they offered an opportunity for her to relocate in Lansdale, PA with corporate company, SKF, they offered me a job. We went down and looked at it and we had a young family and we put our faith in this city and we rolled the dice. Fortunately for us, it all ripped out, but that was a different time. I mean, the whole dynamic of what is going on in this community has been dictated by, in my opinion, upstate New York. And it's flowing down onto the smaller communities and they may seem to be nice with their grant money, but essentially that grant money is your money when it comes down to, down to it. That being said, you know, to what you said, what does Jamestown really wanna do? Do we wanna be a tourist attraction? We had a, a lady last night at the city council meeting who has purchased a property. She's from the Arizona area on Lakeview Avenue and she wants to turn that into something spectacular, but she has some concerns. She's originally from Manhattan, she said, so she's, she's very fluent with what kind of dynamics she needs to have. So again, that's tourism that some of these investors are looking at. They're not really sustainable, working, decent paying jobs. So I think first and foremost, I mean, I think my, my own personal opinion is, the cities failed themselves by not encouraging to try to bring in industry. And that's the foundation of a sound community. I mean, I worked, I've worked at SKF for forty-three years. Okay, we had a plant in Jamestown, the plant was failing, it was an old building. The city did nothing to try to keep that segment of work here in town. They didn't reach out, hence that business sector was redeveloped in Faulkner with a forty million dollar investment from corporate. Okay, things like that need to happen. When you have companies such as SKF, Cummins Engine, you know, Dolestroms, you know, some of those businesses need to be talked to on a regular basis. What can we do to help them? And I think, you know, as a liaison, you know, the council would like to know moving forward, you know, what the direct plan of the commission is. What's, what's your feel for it, you know, so that's, that's, that's down the road, I get that, but I just wanted to give you an example of, some people leave. My kids, I would have loved for them to stay, but they moved on to Greater Pastures, one lives in Baltimore, one lives in Boston. I didn't, I didn't care if they wanted to go, I would have loved if they stayed, but they left for better opportunity. It's kind of like immigration, if you will. Our, my descendants left Italy, Sicily to come to a better life. My children left Jamestown to go to a better life. So you take that into consideration.
I came, I came from Sweden for a better life.
There you go.
And a lot of my neighbors, when I grew up, came from Italy. And a lot of my neighbors, when I grew up, came from Italy for a better life.
It was a melting pot.
And several of them, in both groups, left the area.
Is there an avenue now for businesses to have direct communication with council? Like, is there a proactive approach from the city, or is there, is it just reactive?
Well, I'd like it to be more proactive. You know, whether, from my standpoint, whenever I see S K F bringing in corporate from Sweden, I get in touch with PJ and the county and say, look, you guys need to come down and see what's going on here. They wanna invest, they're asking, we thought they were asking for five million. They're asking for another twenty-five million in investment. Even though it's not in the city of Jamestown, if the city becomes more proactive in creating jobs in the Faulkner, you know, campus, that can lead to housing purchases in Jamestown.
Absolutely.
So that's just my idea.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And I agree with you. And actually, that was happening back when they had the Empire Zones program. Because we, you know, as, as part of the Empire Zones, we made, does it see, one of the zone certified businesses? And asked them how they were doing it. And, you know, what can we do to assist? They were in City Jamestown, Town of Alka, Village Faulkner, Lakewood. So, you know, it was happening. I can't answer for what's happening or not happening now, but in the past, that did occur.
One of the things that was talked about years ago, I'm sorry, just to lend you a quick one. But years ago, when I was on city council and before that even, the conversation was with the, was made, if you will, to a couple of the guys that were on council. And that when you're on council, or you're on a committee, or anything else in the city, you need to be in touch with other people that just live in the city. And you've got to listen to them and ask them questions. Because when it comes down to it, it's not, what happens in the city is not up to or driven by Houston City Council. It's driven by people that are living out there mostly, that are interested in doing business, starting business, going for something new. And that was what some of the guys were saying thirty years ago. We've gotta, and we've got to get out there and be with people. You know, we've gotta talk with them. And we had one guy that he and I were on opposite sides at one time. Coach Turner told us, each write an article as to how you feel on this given issue. And I'm not gonna tell you what the issue was, because it was one that was, would not be, well, they had, you know, talked about. But the, we did it. And they put it out there. And boy, did both of us get a lot of compliments. Compliments, and he was on a different position. He got less than I did.
And perhaps we will have some good news, because on the agenda, Forty Windsor was sold with the, the Aldatlas building. Hopefully, you know, in the, in the coming days or months, we'll see a project come forward to the, to the planning commission for review and approval. So that being said.
The biggest thing I took from part one was, laid out a lot of issues that not only Jamestown had, but that has affected really every town, you know, especially in our area.
Yeah, for not a lot.
Right. And, and I think the most interesting part of this book will be, okay, so you've identified all, this, this author has identified these things that he thinks is the problem. So how does he think that the solutions are? Like that to me is, like, identifying a problem is important. You need to do that before you can figure out a solution. How you attack the solution is, is really the most important. And the thing that I hope I take the most out of this book personally.
Let's hope he has some good ideas. Anything else about the book? All right, is there any other business?
I was just curious if by chance we could, well, you're gonna be leaving, but if you could flow this on to the progression of what's going on in the square with the Northwest Project, as well as the, obviously, Tim Horn's project.
Yeah, I know. Two more just asked for a sign permit. So they're, they're progressing. And I'm not sure too much about what's going on with Northwest, but I'll know. So I'll, maybe know about that for now.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just coming on one thing.
Yeah.
The Brooklyn Square Garden renewal project, the time gets kind of beat up. As I have said some things too, that, you know, it didn't really produce anything. And in some ways, that's true. Some of the things we wanted, in a lot of other ways, a lot of things really did happen. And it was good for the city. Some of it included people that had terrible housing conditions that they were living in. And we were buying up their properties, if you will. One guy was a consulate. He ended up with his house being bought. And he decided, he went the distance, and he built, had a new one built for him up near Allen Park. And he had business and everything. He was doing okay. There was no question about that. But that happened. We moved a whole bunch of people that were living above some of the stores along Main Street. And got them into much better housing. It was better for the families, for the kids, everything else. We got them out of Brooklyn Square. It was not built for housing in the beginning. There used to be dance studios up there, not apartments that weren't done very well. So we got that taken care of. I got a call one day when I was sitting in city hall. And they said, Jeff, you gotta get down here. We found something. I said, what? They said, we're not gonna tell you. Anyway, we get down here. So I did. And I went down. They were tearing down a building. I had to walk along and fall here, not fall, but drop here, step up here. Everything, I got off the street. And they said, now, look down in there. The bridge that's there now was about half complete, but it was all underwater. So right away, I've been working with other people, if you will, immediately, a guy who dealt with getting stones and all this kind of thing to be used in construction. He says, when he comes down, because Andy Scalisi called him, Scalisi Construction, because they were building on the bridge. And he came down, and I met him before when I worked at architecture. And he said, I know where this stuff come from. He says, I'm sure I'm right. So he said, I'll let you know in a couple of days. So he buzzes off to Cleveland. And sure enough, there was a quarry south of Cleveland where it was. And we had that. That bridge has looked so much more beautiful than what was there before, this whole time. But it was made out of something that was already started. It was an add-on, if you will. And made everybody more excited about the river itself being exposed.
And that's the one went up Main Street?
Right at the bottom of the hill.
Right, by the viaduct.
Just before the viaduct. So when we moved the commercial, or not commercial, industrial buildings out of there, one of them, and they went up on, on the west side when we moved them, they needed to have some of the, what they call process utilities out of their factor. The people at HUD would say, no, we don't move that kind of stuff. That's there. It's fixed. We got HUD to back off. And they moved. But the thing exploded up there where it is, really was good for a long time. I guess I'm defending what was attempted to be done in those years. A lot of it was very, very good and helpful. The biggest thing that I missed that was taken out was that triangle that used to sit right where Forest Avenue came down, and it came in from the hospital area and so on. There was the triangle that sat right there in the middle, and it looked so nice. And that was the thing that was taken away. If there's anything we should have left, there was a whole bunch of us that thought it was it. But I just wanted you to know, though, that there was a lot of good that happened with that. Because a lot of people feel it didn't do everything. I said it didn't do everything we wanted, you know, the people that were working on the project. But it did come off with a lot of good things. It's those kinds of actions that massage a city.
One more. I won't be here at the next meeting. Does anyone want to volunteer to be chair? Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.